He's probably logging on about right now. Okay, Steve Hilton's logging in. So we do have a quorum. We're still missing Alan and Brent, not Brent, Brayden. I think anybody else is present. We will be getting a couple. Is Alan right now? Excited? We'll have a couple more in the RDA meeting, but they're...
I got a meeting when I first tried to log in that the meeting had been canceled, just so you know.
Oh, it did say that?
Yeah. And I retried it and it worked.
Oh, that's weird. Maybe it might have been because I logged in earlier today. I had to add another person. I couldn't get it to do it unless I'd opened up the meeting. And then I logged back out of it. So maybe that's what it was.
I don't know. It's working now.
And it looks like we have Alan on board. So Mayor, I think you certainly have a quorum. We're still waiting for Brayden though.
There he is.
And I don't think we have Rich yet either. Oh, yeah, he's here. Okay. Rich, can you hear us?
We got Brayden, so...
Yeah, I can hear you.
Okay, we're good to go.
I'd like to welcome you to our City Council Word Session this evening, Tuesday, June 16th, 2020. For the record, all City Council members are online with us here tonight. They're here. Members of the staff, we appreciate you being here. Any members of the public that's out there, we welcome you to our meeting. Going to ask Councilor Mitchell if he'll lead us in the pledge in our council meeting. You okay with that?
You bet.
Public comment, do we have anyone for public comment that we're aware of?
I haven't received any emails or calls or anything, so I don't know of any public comment.
I don't have any texts yet either, Mayor.
Okay. Can you guys hear me?
Yeah.
Someone from my neighborhood is interested in building a deck on the back of his house, and I think it would have some trouble with setbacks. And he may be coming to talk to the City Council.
Okay. If he doesn't, you might have him get a hold of Mike Eggit sometime. I'm sure Mike can help him. Jeff Woody.
We are aware of his concerns. There's a setback allowance for decks that he can't meet with what he wants to do. And he asked for variance, and it's really not a variance scenario. The only way to address it would be to do code change, kind of like we did at the swimming pools, to even look at that. But when we do that, we're talking rear yard setbacks, full change. So we'll have to look at that. But that's what he would be wanting to talk about if he does comment about that today.
Okay, super good. At least you're aware of it, so. Move on next to Mayor's Report. Don't have anything for this meeting. Our City Administration Report. Do you have anything, Steve? Or do you have any questions for Steve on the Administrator's Report?
Again, I don't know that I have a whole lot to bring up. I mean, it's all in the packet there. We do have some advertisements. We could cover a couple of those, a couple of them that are pretty significant. But the reports are all in there, and all the department heads are present. If you have individual questions for each one of them.
Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to the consent item. Is consideration to approve the meeting minutes from our council work session, council regular session on May 19th, 2020? Are there any changes or corrections to the minutes? Okay. Move on to the action items. First action item is consideration of ordinance 922 to approve the subdivision request for Penunzio Farms PRUD located approximately 850 West, 4400 South. This is requested by Forest Creek Construction. Ms. Eggit, this one's in two parts, so we'll do part one first.
Sounds good. Thank you, Mayor. As a preface to that, as we looked over the packet, we came to conclude that the majority of support documents for 1A were moved or misplaced to 1B. So the majority of your support documents for the actual subdivision itself are in 1B. So just a heads up on that, and vice versa for the 1B item, they got flipped. That being said, I'll just review briefly the executive summaries and the documents that are shown in 1B for the actual subdivision itself. And then if you have any questions, we can go from there, Council and Mayor. This request is for the Penunzio family and Forest Creek Construction, which is Cube Park, Lori Thurgan, and Carol Hyer representing the Penunzio family. It is located on a single-family residential R-1-6 zone. It did go before the Planning Commission on March 24th, 2020. A public hearing was held for the PRUD elements. There were no public comments as a portion of that meeting, but we did fulfill state and city requirements for that public hearing. The conclusion of the public hearing and a review of this request for the subdivision, the PRUD permitting, the Planning Commission made a recommendation to City Council to approve the PRUD subdivision and the applicable PRUD request subject to resolving all outstanding city staff and engineering concerns. Those have since been met finally, after many months of working with them and with city staff, which we pre-hit their efforts and now before the council for their review. Secondary component is you can see that this would be that conditional use approval consideration, which is required also by city code, wherein what they're asking for is a differential on their side yard setbacks. So what they're really asking for at the PRUD overlay, for the most part, is to get a five yard setback for patio home type of a development project. And the other setbacks meet the standard R-1-6 zoning requirements. They're seeking a patio home type development, which you'll see in your packet. And there will be, at the very end of the cul-de-sac, you'll see there's a concrete walkway that actually connects to 4450 to allow them some foot movement to 4450 and access to the senior center. Again, in an environment where the senior center is more accessible to the kind of target demographic of the subdivision. The petitioner's properties are currently listed in the county records under the ownership of EBJ Penunzio Trust. The property is not, for the most part, undeveloped and has had two single-family dwellings on that property. Both those homes will be removed when this subdivision were to start, if it is approved to start in the future. And previously, it was rezoned by the City Council from R2 to R16 quite a few months ago. The plan is for Forest Creek Construction to attain sole proprietary ownership of the property. I believe that's either near completion or completed, and we would like to move forward with that. I anticipate Cube Park will be available with us this evening to discuss any questions you may have for items 1A and 1B. The general plan used for this area is currently set as a combination of mixed use and residential low density. And this property would very well provide a transitional project for this area of the city in compliance with the general plan. Perhaps in that, or besides that, you can see in your packet the comments from city staff. I don't have any outstanding items. And if you look at scrolling down under Sean Douglas, he has a few minor items that he says all these items could be corrected as we move forward prior to their pre-construction meeting. But you could look at those. There's two items under stormwater, which are typically seen. One under streets, which is just that they have the namesign and address signs to be shown. A note for water, existing water surfaces be capped and making sure the sprinkler design is shown correctly on there with only one meter needed. And then a sewer just noting required abandoned sewer lines be kept at the property. No concerns from the fire chief and the fire marshal for the city. No concerns from Mr. Worthing prior to him obviously going into hospitalization back in May. And then scrolling down, you can see our city engineer has recommended approval of the platinum improvement drawings. Another component of this kind of request is the engineering cost estimate. And our city engineer has reviewed the submitted engineering cost estimate and is comfortable with the amount that's represented for that cost estimate and has approved it as such. Also, you'll see provided minutes from the Planning Commission meeting, wherein they made the motion to recommend City Council approval with resolution of the other outstanding items. And then you'll see the support documents of the application, some engineering comments. An indication of what the brickstone kind of development style will be for this. The reason they bring that up, it's a component of PRUD that they have a 40% brick, rocker, stone requirement as an elevated aesthetic quality of the homes in the PRUD. So I shared that both with the subdivision approval, just for your understanding of what they're doing, as well as for the PRUD conditional use permit request. That being said, I think that's really the bulk of everything, Mayor and Council, for the actual subdivision. When we get into the 1B items, I'll go over that briefly, and then we can go from there if you have additional questions for me.
Is there any questions for Mike on this?
I have a question, Mayor.
Go ahead.
Some time ago, I mean, this might be quite a while ago, the city put a moratorium or disbanded or something with the PRUDs. Did that go away, or did I misunderstand that or something like that? Because of all the problems that was caused by the streets being cluttered and garbage pickup and all that kind of stuff, that the city wasn't going to do any more PRUDs even or that style of development. So did that change, or what's going on with that?
Steve, maybe you can help me out.
I could ask her some of it.
Yeah, either one of you, I can address it. Would you like me to tell you what I know?
Yeah, go ahead, Mayor.
Okay. Alan, with that, there was a moratorium back some years ago with Randy Daly that the code was challenging in that they can have private streets and private development and also private infrastructure without a lot of responsibilities when developers came in. And so there's a moratorium placed on that to refine the code. That code has since been updated, and then we now do allow PRUDs again. But what the big change is, is that all the road infrastructure is now city street. So we don't have the challenge of any of that. Who's going to smell plow and who's going to maintain my street and all that sort of thing? They still are required to have their own private water. And I think, Steve, private sewer, or is that city sewer now that I think about that? That's city sewer, isn't it?
I think the sewer is still city.
City sewer as well, Alan. So really, they don't have a lot of risk as a PRUD at this point because the way we changed the code for them to be city utilities and how they function. And that's now how PRUDs are legally allowed, is pretty much we have almost all city facilities as part of their subdivision.
Okay, so they would just fit within the R16 anyway, regardless of...
Pretty much.
The PRUD is kind of a term versus...
It's to go with setbacks, maybe higher fence standards, maybe hold the residents more accountable to have a certain aesthetic, certain quality of landscaping, that sort of thing. They're a little more responsible for their subdivision.
Like a R16 with a HOA kind of thing?
Yeah, that's what it is. That's pretty much what we're saying.
Sounds good. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mayor?
Alan, Comey Farms was the first one where they did the dedicated city streets and requires curb gutters, sidewalks on both sides of the street and the city sewer. That was our first one. That ordinance was completely rewritten back, way back. Well, it's been a while.
Okay.
Ms. Mayor?
Go ahead.
Yeah, I had questions along the same line, particularly with the, some of the PRUDs that are maybe a little older, 20-plus years or give or take. And some of the problems that are having now that they've been there for a little while, most notably is one by me, they had a fire hydrant that was tested and was broken. And now you got a homeowner association trying to fix or replace a fire hydrant where they have no skill, no experience, nothing. And so they were kind of caught in the lurch and are alerting curve. Now, a lot of these types of problems that we're hearing about, but of course, because it's a PRUD we don't respond to, have they been addressed in this new ordinance as you're talking about? If you would please comment on that, Ms. Eggit.
Yeah, the only, with the new PRUD ordinance, the only thing that really the HOA has responsibility for at this point is the storm drain system, their detention base and keeping those clear. Everything else is city utility, water, sewer roads. So, yeah, you're talking about PRUDs that existed post the ordinance change when the moratorium went into effect. And there were issues and are still some concerns that we do have challenges with the Public Works Department. So your observation, maybe with an older PRD is correct. Comey Farms, Mitchell Farms, Parks River Walk, those are all subject to some of the newer standards. And so you'll see that they actually have, they won't have the same challenges that they would have in some of those older ones you're referencing because they are now city utilities. Again, besides the stormwater, which would be the HOA's responsibility.
Okay, because where I live in proximity of some of those older ones, of course, I hear about it. And so just to, so I know that those issues are being addressed, and it sounds like they are.
If you want to see an example of what these developers have already done in our community, if you go down 4450 behind Catruba's Kia, you'll see the Mitchell Farms PRUD. That's the same developers of this project. And that one was done with the newer standard in place.
Yes, I think Mrs. Thurbid's son lives over there.
Yes, he does. Nick Thurbid lives in there. Yes, he's a resident.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mike, that Parks River Walk is the old style.
Oh, is it? Okay, so I misspoke with that one.
That was the last one. That's the one that felt like it had to be changed because there were so many problems when we did that.
So omit that from the list, but Comey Farms and Mitchell Farms reflect the new code.
Okay, any... Go ahead.
I didn't see any comments from Chief Shali on that. Is there any concerns from the fire department on a long, narrow cul-de-sac like that?
I think they were addressed. Initially, we had some concerns that the hydrant wasn't placed inappropriate. So we addressed those, and it was, once they did, then we were fine.
And to that comment, Councilmember Ellis, the road is at a 60-foot standard width. It's not a narrow street. It's a typical street section of the city.
The regular street. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
With regard to the old style PRUDs that went in before the code was changed, what's the official city stance on those PRUDs and the citizens that live in there? We get asked all the time. Is the official stance, that's the way it is, based on the law at the time? Or have we had any discussions about ever absorbing those streets and those infrastructures?
Do you want to mention it? I've mentioned some of it, Steve, or you can?
Go ahead, Mayor.
I know it gets brought up to me too, especially if I go to the senior center. I haven't heard anything for a while, but that's still basically private property, and that's the way it was set up. There has been a lot of discussion, but that's kind of the way it is. I think that's what it's all come down to. It's why we went the new route. You know, I have this one area, ladies, hey, we pay property tax the same as everybody else. We don't provide any, we have other areas, private property where there's more than one home. You got to Catruba's area. There's other family homes where there's maybe more than one home on a private driveway, but we don't do anything on any of those properties. They always say, we pay property tax, but I know these patio homes over in that Shady Brook area, I looked here not too long ago with the situation there, questions I was being asked, but they pay about $15 a month for Riverdale's property taxes. And that gives them police and fire and parks and all the roads after they go out of their private driveways. So that's just kind of, it's just how it is. It's that way. I know that Larry Hanson mentioned once about, maybe there was something with Sherwood Park. Okay. And I don't even remember that. Been probably 10, 10 or more years ago, so I'm not sure what the discussion was there. But it's kind of, yeah, they're just kind of between a rock and a hard spot. But the new ones, that's why we did that, was so they got all, you know, they don't have to replace the road, just like, you know, they have to replace, repave their roads in there and everything. It's, it gets a little tacky with homeowners associations. But some of them budget for it. I know the ridge up there. I know they're pretty good about budgeting. I saw that. I helped them with some financial stuff up there at one time in my earlier life. And they're pretty well on top of things there. They know what it's going to cost them. They're one of the better-run HOAs, I think, around. I don't know if that helps or not, but...
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. Okay, move on to item B, 1B. We're going to have to move along. Still got RDA agenda two. This is considerate. Go ahead.
I can give the short, Mayor, when you're ready. I apologize.
Why don't you go ahead and just explain 1B quickly then?
Okay. So this is the one that's Resolution 2020-14. Obviously, the subdivision was the ordinance 922. This is a secondary component. All planned residential use development projects in Riverdale City are subject to a conditional use permit approval from the City Council. So that's what you're doing in this case, is actually approving the conditional use permit request for the planned residential development application on top of the subdivision. So in this case, right, 1A would be we approve the subdivision, we like it, we like the subdivision. 1B is then giving that leniency on the setback on the side yard and kind of the plan they proposed. So what you'll see in your packet is those supporting documents, which actually are required by our city code, which are in line with this ordinance you all have been talking about, this upgrade. This was a requirement to hold the developers more accountable, to show their ability to perform, and also for us to do a check on their CCNRs, to make sure those things that they are responsible for maintaining look good. And those CCNRs are in the packet that you have. I have shared with Steve Brooks. Steve has basically looked at those and made a brief comment. In the email he sent to me, it says, Mike, as I understand it, we require CCNR, we require CCRs just because we want them to have something in place. Well, those are is up to them, where it is really private and civil. The only thing we would care about is if something in there violates some code section, that would be something we couldn't agree to. We don't want to be in position to acting as our legal or local authority on their CCRs. So that being the case, you know, he didn't seem to have any issues. I looked over the CCNRs. They look fine. They seem to be matching what they've done before. In fact, they're kind of just a replication of what they did with Mitchell Farms. Frankly, it's an extension of that with some of the different wording to match the subdivision specifically. Looking down the list, you'll see what their application, the actual listings are answers to the questions for items A, B, C, D that are on the application. For sake of time, I won't read those out loud at this point, maybe in the main meeting, but feel free to review those. And then you can see the legal description, that sort of thing. Finally, the thing that I want to point out that's required by our city code is that they do kind of a, an explanation, a more thorough explanation of their project. You know, that they recognize they're going to get a business license, that they've at least looked at a need for traffic state, that they've considered the sensitive lands. They've looked at the parking, how the parking will be provided, how the PRUD will be independently managed as far as any of the expenses and replacement costs associated with it. And they say in that that the HOA itself will be independently managed by HOA management companies, two hundred consideration are HOA management of Utah and Deseret Edge Property Management LLC. This is helpful in alleviating the concerns that some of you councilmembers have brought. When you get a professional company that's looking at the books, keeping track of what the expenses and needs are and assessing that, it helps the presidency of that HOA better manage those funds and those responsibilities, wherein some of these older ones don't have that benefit, unfortunately, because this code wasn't in place at that time. And then after that, you'll see an annual formal, which again, the code requires that they show how they can fund the requirements. And you'll see in there, snow removal, landscape maintenance, electricity, water, common areas, property taxes, et cetera. Again, that was something that the old code didn't provide, and the new code now addresses to make sure that they know what their accountability is and we know what they're accountable for annually. So I just wanted to kind of bring that up in light of the discussion that that has been provided and submitted here as part of this conditional use permit request for PRUD. And I turn it over back to Mayor and Council for further questions. Thank you.
Okay, do we have any questions? Okay, seeing none, move on to action item two, 2A. This is a public hearing. Mr. receive and consider comment regarding proposed amendments to the Riverdale City Code Human Resources Manual. This is referred to in 1-7-1, also in 1-7-2, salaries in City Council and Mayor, and 1-7-F-6. This is salary of the Justice Court Judge. Mr. Garden, do you have any comments? We won't open it now, but a public hearing. Any comments for this meeting?
I can go over them in the regular meeting and let us know.
I didn't understand you. I'm sorry.
I can go over them during the regular meeting, if you'd like.
Oh, that's fine. Okay. Any questions here? Move on to item three. Consideration of Resolution 2020-10 containing the city certified tax rate of .000921 is calculated by the Weber County Auditor. Any comments on this, Cody, or do you want to wait for them?
I can just do them in the regular meetings. We're on time, if you'd like.
Okay. Move on to 4A. This is, again, a public hearing. This is, should we just skip over these first few for what to do with budget? You're okay, Council, on that. We can ask questions in the regular meeting. Kind of expedite things. Move down to action item six. Review Fraud Risk Questionnaire for submission to the State Auditor's Office. Is that you, Mr. Garden, or Mr. Brooks?
Cody will do that.
That's me, too. And we can go over it in the regular meeting to do new requirement from the State Auditor's Office this year.
Action item seven. Consideration of Resolution 2020-12. This is authorizing a pickup contribution for public safety and firefighter tier-two employee retirement contributions to the Utah retirement system and the contribution to a 401K/457 account to other tier-two participants. You want to talk about that here? Any questions on that, Council? Maybe you need to have it explained first. Should we wait till the next meeting? Everybody okay? Looks like it. Okay, move on to action item eight. This is consideration of Resolution 2020-13. These are proposed changes to the Riverdale City Consolidated Fee Schedule. Mr. Garden?
So this is only one little change, and I can talk about it more in the regular meeting, but with Jared's billings through Golden Cross, we incur, right now, we pay merchant fees on all of our credit card transactions. And so we've talked to you in the past, and you'd like us just to build that into the rate. We can't really do that in the ambulance fees because they're set up by the state. And then to do, have some additional functionality through billings and things like that and follow HIPAA guidelines, we really need to use a different merchant provider, and their fees are significantly higher. So we really need to pass that fee on to the customer. And so the only change is to propose a $2 per transaction transaction fee, and it just covers the city's merchant fees associated with those electronic fund transfers.
Okay, is there any questions for this meeting? Okay, move on next to discretionary. Any discretionary items for this meeting? Seeing none, we'll move on to the RDA Board Meeting. Move down to consent items. Is there any changes or corrections to the minutes on this? Okay, seeing none. It shows a closed executive session. Is that still scheduled on there, Steve?
Mayor, yeah, I just, it'll be pretty brief and short, but I wanted to go in really quick. We are talking about purchase of lands on that action item two, and it's concerning that, but it won't last long. It'll be short.
Okay. All right, move on to the action items. Again, these are budget, this first one's a budget item. Should we forego that or RDA meeting? Move on to action item two. This is authorization land acquisition with the DRH company and RDA Development. So we'll have to wait till we.
Right.
Okay, we'll probably have to have that closed executive session first. Any discretionary for this meeting? Have a motion to adjourn our work session.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The work sessions is completed. We'll move on here in just a moment to our city council meetings. Looks like we're already past six o'clock, so.
Mayor, if I could just inquire, Shaili there, are we good on the live feed? Everything all right? Shaili, are you there?
I was trying to do thumbs up, but it wasn't working. Yes, we're good.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Okay, we'd like to welcome you this evening to our Riverdale City Council meeting, Tuesday, June 16th, 2020. For the record, we have all city council members present, as we have members of the staff. Like to, I don't, Roger isn't on, is he, Steve?
He has signed in since. I believe he is here.
He is here. That's good. We're glad you're with us, Roger. I was gonna excuse you, but I won't if you're able to be with us. And Roger's, we're doing some medical treatment, but we're glad you can listen and be with us, Roger.
I'm here, Mayor.
Good. Loud and clear, too. That's great. Okay, move on next to our pledge of allegiance. I've asked Counselor Mitchell if he'll lead us in the pledge, please.
Yeah, if everyone would please stand and recite the pledge with me. I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the reporting of public for which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Move on next to our moment of silence. We'd like to take a moment of silence tonight, as we kind of remember what's going on in our nation. I think times are pretty tough for a lot of people, tougher for some than others, but got a lot of unrest in the country, a lot of things going on that's really unfortunate to see. And hopefully, we can get those resolved and things settle down. We have peace again in our nation. But while we hope all people are treated equally and receive fair treatment, that's important. Just to mention on the pandemic also, I think it's appropriate to take a moment of silence to remember that. They stayed wide. The number of cases increased. I know in meetings I've been in, Weber County, Weber County's number of cases being reported weekly are up. It was Ben, I think about 30 a week. And I know I was in a meeting last Friday, and they said the number that week was 90. And so it's taken a spike. The last figure I saw, there's seven cases in Riverdale of coronavirus. So I'd like to just take a moment of silence behalf of these two problems, that they might subside and again, have peace in our, in our country. Let's now take a moment of silence. Thank you very much. Now have a period of time for public comment. This is an opportunity to come forward, or at least on the online, and or you can text in. There's some numbers there for you to either text or send us an email. If you got your comments in, they can be read here at this time. If you don't, if you send them in during the meeting, we can, we'll read those at the end of the meeting, also the city council meeting. So time is yours. Regarding any concerns you might have, we'd ask you limits your time to about three minutes. And pass the time to you, Shaili. And Rick, do we have any, is there anybody live in the council room?
No, nobody's here, and I have not received any emails.
I don't have any texts either, Mayor.
All right, seeing none. Somebody have a comment? Seeing none, we move on next to presentations and reports. I've just got a couple of things I'd like to say. This last couple of weeks, there's been, like we talked, a lot of things going on. I'd just like to give a kudos to our police department. This has been exceptionally tough couple of weeks. They've been involved in a lot of things, not only have they performed their job well here in Riverdale City, but I know they've been called to Salt Lake on at least, well, I know two occasions, they sent 10 officers down there. They were on, on there the Saturday night when the vehicles were burned. They were there trying to help keep the peace there. I think Chief, maybe you can, I think, didn't they go back a couple more times, five officers when they were requested?
Did you want me to comment on that, Mayor?
You can, yeah. I don't know how many times they were in Salt Lake, but I know there was a couple of times with about 10.
Yeah, we had, we went down a total of five times the first night, 10 officers. And then the other four nights, we had five officers each night. And then we also helped in Augon City with theirs as well.
Yeah, they helped with that peaceful demonstration. And I know as they got closer to the funeral after Officer Lyde was killed, we backfilled down there and helped, our officers helped to provide some time off for some of their officers that hadn't been able to have that luxury, I guess you'd call it. Our, our folks were tired even when they did that. The funeral, they helped with the funeral, our police officers far as traffic control. They've just done a great job. I, I mentioned before, you know, there's a lot of unrest with police. And I read, Chief sends me all the pass ons from each of the shifts, and I read those pretty faithfully, see what's going on. And I just, you just have to be proud of our police department, their manner in which they serve, their professionalism, their compassion and service. I see them giving rides to people. I see them unlocking cars. They even go to neighboring cities. They'll go there when the police are involved in, and help unlock cars for people. They just do a lot of, a lot of really good things. And I think we should be exceptionally proud of them and what they're doing. This time, it's been hard for the police. I know everybody in the city does a really good job, but maybe just spotlight the police department tonight because it's, it's been a little tougher than normal. I wanted to mention, too, another item. Sean, the civic center, the grounds is looking just really, really good. I don't know if you rest, have you noticed it tonight when you walked in, but up here, this out front and the south side, it's just made everything look, look really spiffy good. And I know even at the Veterans Memorial for the Rock and the trees and the new landscape was put in, it was even, it was even looked good then. So we appreciate all you do. We appreciate all our employees and the great job they do here. And that's all I've got for my mayor's report. Move on next to city administration report. Mr. Brooks, did you have anything?
Just briefly, and I'll kind of follow up on that, Mayor. You know, this could have been disastrous for us, this whole, the timing of this thing, you know, with Roger getting sick right when this pandemic hit. But it's just amazing, as I'm sitting in this chair now, because I work directly with Roger, not so much the department heads, but it's just been phenomenal to watch these guys do their jobs. And it makes it so nice because I don't really have to do anything. I mean, I just kind of steer and coordinate it, let them do their thing. And it's just been refreshing to know that we have such good people. For the most part, they're young. I mean, I look at them, and I feel like the old man around here, maybe except for Sean or something like that. But it's, it's just, it's refreshing to know that the city is in such good hands. And that we don't have to worry about these things because they could, they could really be trying times right now. Everybody is pulling their, their weight, and they're doing what needs to be done. And the city continues to operate even with all the challenges we've had. So my hat's off to all of them, including police. I mean, I certainly admire those guys for what they do, day in and day out. But all of our departments are just very impressive. And I've, I've never seen it so crucial as it is right now. And they've all just stepped up the plate. So it's been, it's been a real honor, basically, to, to work with them and, and go through this. So I just wanted to recognize all of them. I know we don't always do that, but every, every department from top to bottom has just done phenomenal through this whole crisis deal. And they're all here. If you have any questions on either particular department reports, you could address them. On the employee recognition, let's move on to that. You can, you can hit them up for questions afterwards. But I did want to at least recognize Jeff. Jeff's just passing 28 years here, which is, again, Jeff and Randy both, I mean, we don't see them a whole lot during this thing, but their jobs are still getting done. I called Randy one day about an issue, and it was resolved the next day. And Jeff's same way. We get a call, yep, we have him out there in hardly any time. So Rich, who's present with us tonight, his past six years, congrats to Rich there. Didn't think you'd make it that long, buddy, but we're glad to have you. So three officers here, Officer Phillips, Officer, Officer Phillips with four, Officer Lovato with four, Officer Stanger with two, kudos to them as well, Lisa, who works under Rich, and Camera, who's with our fire department. So recognize all them for their accomplishments and their time they put into it. So. Staffing authorization, we continue as usual. I mean, like I said, the city's still running and operating. You really haven't skipped a beat. I mean, we have, and things are different, but everything's getting done as best we can. And I don't think the public's really been affected greatly. So again, kudos to all them for how they're handling it. As far as the community development report, you mind if you want me to cover that one too, Mayor? Or Mike, did you want to say anything on that? I know we had a grand opening last week. Maybe touch on that one really quick.
Yeah, a quick quack, had a grand opening, I guess you'd say, invitation to the public to come and get free car washes. That's still going on. And there was a small ribbon cutting event wherein some of the representatives and staff were present. The mayor was present to cut the ribbons. And it was a good event. It's about 45 minutes to an hour. They gave a brief tour of the site and had a small lunch that you could take away. And it was good. And they had everybody socially distanced, which was good. So I think it turned out well. We had some representation from the Chamber of Commerce. And, and it was a good event. And appreciate those that did attend. And obviously, we're just glad to have a new business in our city. And they seem very eager and excited to be here, so.
And don't feel offended if you didn't get invited. They specifically asked, we keep that quite small because of the restrictions and stuff. So that wasn't widely shared. There was a reason. That was at their request. So we did have representation there. They certainly knew the city was there. The mayor gave some words and different things. Interesting enough, the, one of the original founders of that, his mother, he mentioned in his remarks, was a Riverdale resident, which kind of surprised me for some time. I don't know that she still is, but he has some ties to our city. So that was kind of interesting hearing that. But, you know, I think you only had 10 days of those free car washes, and that was last Thursday, wasn't it, Mike? Or maybe they started it on Friday. So that will expire this week, but run over and get your car washed, and that's for free. So.
Yep.
And then as far as financial report goes, we can, the whole meeting tonight is Cody. So if you have questions on that kind of stuff, I think he will be available and willing to answer anything we have if that comes up. But that's all I have under that, Mayor.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor? Mayor? We're here. Yeah, going back to what was talked about, would you, Mr. Douglas, and I will caveat on what the mayor said, the areas look great. Happy to see the roundabouts coming along with the city civic center and the parks and stuff. My question to Mr. Douglas is, are you getting, do you have the help you need, especially like with the part-time seasonal type help? Are you, do you have that? Is it, are you staffed?
So right now, I don't have any seasonal help on my own. I'm actually using, Rich is people from the community center that he's not able to use. And so we've been staffed actually really well by using them. And it's been working good for both of us. It keeps his people working and gives us some extra help. So it's really helped us to have a pretty good start this year.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate the ingenuity in working with that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else on that? One other thing on the quick quack grand opening. They did have a night, I think it was a week ago yesterday on Monday night. They had a fundraiser they did, and people came in, they got a free car wash, and then they could make a donation. They were actually making donations to the Utah Military Academy. They're going through a big renovation there, expansion, building a lot of new classrooms upstairs and doing things. And they, they really can use, I know they bonded, but they, they need help with things. And so they did a fundraiser for them, and it actually was a cloudy night. It was blustery, and I think it even showered a little bit, but it was a bad night to have people come in. But they still managed that quick quack matched any donations that were made. And Military Academy still came away with $3,000. So it was a good thing. It'll be good for them and for their school. I think one thing that was mentioned, too, I know they've done a lot of service, but Major Workman said that right now, he says annually, they do about 5,000 hours of community service for the surrounding communities. So they really do a lot. That's their flag raising and things they do and color guards. And they do a lot of cleanup and that during cleanup days. So they hope, just pass that on to you. It's a pretty neat thing we'll do. Move on next to the consent items. We just have one item. That's consideration to prove the meeting minutes from our May 19th, 2020 city council work session, and also for the city council regular session on the same eve. Do we have any changes or corrections at this point? With that, do we have a motion on the consent? we have a motion on the consent items?
Motion to approve consent items?
Second.
Have a motion. We have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Unanimous in favor. Move on next to the action items. Action item one is in two parts. One A is consideration of ordinance 922 to approve subdivision request for Penunzio Farms PRUD located approximately 850 West, 4400 South in Riverdale as requested by Forest Creek Construction. Mr. Eggit.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm not sure if Hugh Park, the representative for their development is on. He might be one of the calling users, but I sent him a text message reminding him to hop on if he's not. So we'll see if he's on.
Mike, I'm here by telephone.
Perfect. There's Hugh.
I will never be in front of a computer. I'm on by phone.
Perfect. So Hugh is, Hugh is participant on the phone. Perfect. So the petition is on this for the Penunzio family in Forest Creek Construction. Representation is Hugh Park, Corey Thurgood, and Carol Hires representing the Penunzio's interest in this. The property is located, as you said, Mayor, 825 West, 4400 South in the single family residential R-1-6 zone. Tonight's request will be for their final approval consideration of their plan and plat. And on March 24, 2020, there was a public hearing, hearing held with the planning commission for the PRUD element of this wherein the city was able to meet state notice requirements and leave public comment. No public comment was provided as a portion of that public hearing. And following the public hearing, the discussion with the planning commission took place and they made a motion to the city council to recommend approval of the request of Penunzio Farms PRUD subdivision as well as the application of the, the planned residential unit development designation for the subdivision with an understanding that all outstanding city staff and engineering concerns be resolved prior to advancing to city council. Those have since been resolved as, as evidenced by the city staff and engineering comments shown up in the packet and there before the city councils tonight. Secondary component, which I won't get into too much because it is item one B, is that conditional use permit approval requirement to qualify the planned residential unit development. So we can discuss that momentarily after this discussion. But should this proposal receive approval, the plat would need to be recorded afterward. The escrow performance bond would need to be established with the city. The stormwater maintenance agreement would need to be recorded as is evidenced by Mr. Douglas's comments. And then obviously they could move forward with the pre-construction meeting for the site. And the property is listed under the ownership of EBITJ Penunzio Trust and historically has been an open agricultural field, if you will, with two homes that have been on for many years. And the rezoning took place, not quite a year ago, but if I ever recollect, about eight, eight or so months ago, plus or minus, from R2 to R16. Obviously, the intent is for the property to become under full ownership of Forest Creek Construction as part of this development should subdivision move forward. The general plan used for this area is a combination of mixed use and residential low density in order to accommodate a transitional use for this area from 4450 to 4400. This project does a good job of doing that and that it provides a little bit more of a tighter density, but not an overly tight density as it transitions from commercial into more of a single family residential area. With that, I'm just going to hit on some staff comments briefly. Scrolling down to the departmental staff reports, Mr. Douglas states the following. I have attached my review for the Penunzio Farms subdivision. All the items could be corrected as we move forward prior to their pre-construction meeting things. Under stormwater, he notes the drainage system operations and maintenance planning, including the VMPs, needs to be recorded with the plat. The plan needs to be corrected to list proper entities and phone numbers. And I'm sure that that's something that, that is easily done as far as fixing the entities and phone numbers in that plan. And then a notice of intent filed with the state. Under streets, it says street names, sign address signs need to be shown. Under water, note requiring existing water surfaces that are not useful need to be capped at main line. Sprinkler system design shows only using one of the existing meters and the size of the landscape area does not require two meters. Finally, under sewer, note requiring abandoned sewer lines be capped at the property line. No comments from the, the police department of concern. No comments from the fire marshal of concern. I did receive a late commentary, didn't notice in the work session, but Mr. Shaw has addressed his comments. He's supportive of the fire marshal's position. And again, they did resolve a fire hydrant concern prior to coming to city council tonight. Our city administrator, Roger Werthen, back in, on May 7th, says, I have no comments on the proposed final plan subdivision. Recommend moving forward developers met city requirements. So those are the commentary from staff. And then our city engineer following that says, I here, here with recommend engineering approval of the plat improvement drawings and the calculations estimated. And that letter was dated 10 of June 2020. A component of this, of any subdivision approval is the engineering cost estimate or escrow request. Our city engineer has reviewed that engineer cost estimate. And he says, in my opinion, the engineer estimate escrow amount, including 10% warranty amount should be 401, 801 at 68 cents. And that was dated also 10 of June 2020. So, and then you can see the punch list for the engineers' cost estimate thereafter. You following, have in your packet, the planning commission minutes wherein it was reflected, their recommendation for approval. The application follows thereafter for the subdivision. And then you see some commentary from the developer's engineer, just showing that he is addressing comments from staff process. A letter from Mr. Park regarding the brick and stone development aesthetic of the site at the 40% or higher rate as reported by the PRUD. And that was dated March 29, 2020. And he has some pictures of their actual, if I remember right, this is their Mitchell Farms PRUD subdivision. So it's kind of the style home they're still looking for. And then following that, you see the plat in the plan. So that's, that's the, that's pretty much the packet in a nutshell for the subdivision request. And I defer back to all of you with any questions or comments you may have from the mayor or for the developer. Thank you.
Any questions? Go ahead, Councilor Ellis.
Just wondering if there's going to be any restrictions on, on street parking? For that, for the houses there? Is it just going to be where it's a wider road? Is it just going to be anybody can park there if they need to?
Yeah, that, that's the plan. And obviously with the 60-foot standard right of way, it would, it would operate as a typical pull the sack street at that point, Councilmember Ellis.
Are there any other questions? Seeing none, need a motion to approve, well, consideration of ordinance 922 to approve subdivision request for Penunzio Farms PRUD. This is located approximately 850 West, 4400 South. Do we have a motion?
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
Move to approve ordinance 922 to approve the subdivision as stated in the packet.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion. We have a second. Ms. Evans, will you poll the council on the ordinance, please?
Councilmember Ellis?
Aye.
Councilmember Mitchell?
Aye.
Councilmember Arnold?
Aye.
Councilmember Hilton?
Aye.
Councilmember Stevens?
Aye.
It's unanimous in favor. Thank you. Move on to item one B. This is consideration of resolution 2020-14. This is to approve the conditional use permit request for a planned residential unit development, PRUD at Penunzio Farms, PRUD subdivision located at the same address. Mr. Eggit?
Thank you, Mayor. The second component is required by our city code for the planned residential unit development request and that there be a conditional use approval consideration for that application. So with the subdivision now being approved, the request is basically in this case for this development for the five yard side yard setback in, in kind of a change from what the setbacks are for the R-1-6 for the side yard. Other than that, the front yard and the rear yard need the, the setback components of the single family residential R-1-6 zoning. That being said, the packet has in it all the requirements and in a list of what the applicant has done to meet the requirements of the planned residential unit development subdivision. You can see in my review, they, they have complied and met or exceeded the standard from the PRUD. Following that, you'll see a review of the minutes. And we received a commentary from our city attorney regarding their provided CCNRs wherein he said, as I understand it, we require CCNRs just because we want them to have something in place. What those are is up to them where it is really private and civil. The only thing we would care about is if something in there violates some code section that would be something we couldn't agree to. We don't want to be positioning as acting as their legal or local authority on their CCNRs. So I bring that up kind of in advance of that with the PRUD, we require that there be CCNRs that we've looked at so we can make sure that the developer is aware and we're aware of the responsibilities of that PRUD. So we don't get in situations where maybe some of the older ones in the community, we as a city are confused or don't know what's going on. That is obviously a requirement that was established by the update to the PRUD ordinance that we've talked about at the work session in effort to be more aware and more able to be responsible with the, the application of a PRUD. So in this case, this would have HOA with the CCNRs and PRUD, I guess you'd say annual costs associated with that. So to that effect, there's also a component that the applicant provided a pro forma, an annual pro forma of expense for the development that has been provided and is shown in your packet. I'm trying to get to it real quick. And it reflects, it reflects a fee amount annually, a fee receipt of annually about $18,240 and expenses of about $12,550. That's what I'm seeing, $95 a month is what's requested. So you can look over that pro forma more. It has items such as snow removal, landscape maintenance, electricity, water, and other expenses. Another requirement of our HOA, or excuse me, our PRUD ordinance is that there be some level of independent management so that the homeowners that are operating the PRUD aren't left wondering, what do I do? How do I do this? So the applicant has provided us with, with on their statement page, a statement saying that they're reviewing bids from a number of independent HOA management companies to two currently under consideration are the HOA Management of Utah, Deseret Property Management LLC. Says when a final determination has been made by developers, we will advise the city as to which company has been awarded the contract. So that helps us to know if there are issues from residents who we can go out and talk to and say, hey, these things need to be addressed. You'll see in there as well, other comments that are, their, their responses to things that are requested by the PRUD. For the sake of time, I won't go into a lot more detail with them, but you're welcome to look over them. And if you have any follow-up questions, please feel free to bring those up and we can talk about it with the applicant. And then that same letter showing that they meet or exceed the 40% standard for brick, rock and stone is also included, as is the cost estimate and the approval of the engineers' cost estimate. So they've checked all the boxes that are required by city code. Again, city staff is supportive of it. And then I defer at that point, Mayor, to any questions or comment the city council or you may have of myself or the developer. Thank you.
Any questions or comments?
I just had a comment. I wanted to thank the applicant. I think this is a great transitional use between our zones, between our commercial zone and our residential zone. And I know it takes a little bit of effort to put something like this together. So I wanted to thank them. I want to thank the city too. I think it's good that we have options for people to, to make this work. Just because it didn't fit as an R16, we had the PRUD and that was in place and that was good. That's, that's, that's good that Mr. Eggit was able to offer that to them and say, hey, we have something that'll work for you. And so I'm just, I'm glad this is able to come together. I think it's a great fit.
Thank you, Councilor Mitchell. With that, do we have a motion on the resolution 2020-14 to approve the conditional use permit request for the PRUD?
Sure. I'll make a motion to approve resolution 2020-14 to approve the conditional use permit as stated in the packet.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion. We have a second. Ms. Evans, would you poll the council on the resolution, please?
Aye.
Councilmember Arnold?
Aye.
Councilmember Hilton?
Aye.
Councilmember Stevens?
Aye.
Councilmember Ellis?
Aye.
Unanimous in favor. Thank you. Move on next, action item number two. This is a public hearing. Receive and consider comments regarding the proposed amendments to the Riverdale City Code, the Human Resources Manual. This is referred to in 1-7-1. Also, 1-7-2 salary of the city council and mayor, and 1-7F-6 salary of the justice court judge. Mr. Card, do you have any comments before we open the public hearing?
So I just want to go over a couple of things real quick since we didn't get to do it in the public, in work session, just so you're aware and so everybody can see what's going on here. I'm on the packet and I'm sharing my screen on page 42. We have our executive summary that it kind of explains. I think there was a little bit of confusion last year on this ordinance. And so I just want to make a couple of things clear. So there's a few things happening in the ordinance. First, in section one, that's your wage as the mayor and council that we're changing by the, the same percentage that the average wages went up for the city, per the city policy. Section two is the compensation grade and step schedule for all the employees response. And that's attached here in. Section three were required by state law to specifically, the judge has to get the average increase of all the employees and then it has to specifically be spelled out and per URS regulations. And so that's why it's here in subdivision. So there's actually three parts to this. And I just want to make sure that was really clear before we have the public hearing. And that's all I have. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, so we'll open the public hearing. Do we have a motion? Open the public hearing?
I'm moved. Second.
Have a motion. We have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Public hearing is now open. We would invite you to, if you're here, welcome to make comment. You can send it in. It'd have to be sent in fairly quickly on this. Do you have anything, Shaylee? Any input on the public hearing?
I have nothing, no emails and no public is here.
Okay, Mr. Taylor?
I don't have any texts, Mayor.
Okay, seeing none, do we have a motion to close the public hearing?
It's all moved.
Second.
We have a motion. We have a second. All in favor of closing the public hearing?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Public hearing is now closed. We'll move on to item two B. This is consideration of passage of ordinance 921. These are amendments to the Riverdale City Code and as previously stated, the employee wages, salary of the city council, mayor, salary of the justice court judge. Any comments or questions, discussion on this? Seeing none, do we have a motion on ordinance 921?
Have to approve the ordinance as stated in the packet?
We have a motion. We have a second. Ms. Evans, will you poll the council on ordinance 921, please?
Councilmember Arnold? Councilmember Hilton?
Aye.
Councilmember Stevens?
Aye.
Councilmember Ellis?
Aye.
And Councilmember Mitchell?
Aye.
Okay, I hear unanimous in favor. So the motion passes. Okay, move on to consideration of resolution 2020-10 containing the city certified tax rate of .000921 as calculated by the Weber County Auditor. Mr. Card, I was going to ask, is that the auditor? Is that the, does the auditor do that?
The auditor actually sets the tax, the The auditor actually sets the tax, the tax rate. So the assessor assesses the tax, but the auditor is actually the one that sets the tax rate. And so you can see here, here's our PT 693 for the current year. So this is our rate for the current year as the mayor talked about. And then this is the budgeted revenue associated with it. And then that's maximum allowed by loss. You can see we're significantly under that amount. If my screen will allow me, you can see here it is from the prior year. So our tax rate is actually decreasing because home values are going up and the property tax rate guarantees us a set budgeted amount. So you can see the tax rate decreased by approximately .000051%. However, our budgeted revenues due to growth and redevelopment in the city is anticipated to go up $18,613 to be the $70763. And so we just have to approve this by June 22nd so that we can set a property tax rate with the county and the state. Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Do you have any questions for Mr. Carden? Seeing none, do we have a motion on resolution 2020-10 containing the city certified tax rate?
Mayor, motion to approve resolution 2020-10, uh, approving the city certified tax rate?
Okay, we have a motion. We have a motion. We have a second. Ms. Evans, uh, would you poll the council on this resolution, please?
Councilmember Hilton?
Aye.
Councilmember Stevens?
Aye.
Councilmember Ellis?
Aye.
Councilmember Mitchell?
Aye.
Councilmember Arnold?
Aye.
Okay, unanimous in favor of, uh, resolution 2010, excuse me, 2020-10. Move on to action item number four. Uh, this is a public hearing also to receive and consider comment regarding adoption of the final Riverdale city budget for fiscal year 2020-21. Uh, Mr. Carden?
So just really quick, thank you, Mayor. On page 158 of the packet showing on my screen, these are the changes that we've had to the budget associated since we last talked at the May 5th strategic planning meeting. And you can see what those are. I have explanations. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them. But other than that, it's unchanged from the tentative budget that was approved on May 5th. Thank you.
Okay, with that, we'll open the public hearing. Uh, we need a motion to open the public hearing?
Some move? Second.
Have a motion. We have a second. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Public hearing is now open. Is there anyone for public hearing? On this side of Rich?
I have no, sorry, go Rich.
That's my fault. Dave, anything, anything, Rich? Shaylee?
I have no.
I have no people here and no emails.
All right, thank you. I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Some move? Second.
Have a motion. We have a second. All in favor of closing hearing?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Public hearing is now closed. Move on to item 4B. This is consideration of resolution 2020-11. This is to adopt the city's final budget for fiscal year 20 through 2021. Uh, do you have any more questions or comments on this, uh, item B on the resolution?
I had a comment.
Go ahead.
Um, I think it's, it's, uh, pretty interesting that, that we're approving a budget tonight around, I think it's about $8 million. And, uh, I think it's, I mean, I hope it shows that the public has some faith in us as they elect us, um, that they would trust us and, and, and that we would make this decision tonight with really no public input other than just their faith in us. And, and so hopefully we're all doing what they want, you know?
Mayor, I agree with that. And I also compliment city staff because, because the city operates so well, the public is happy.
Agreed.
That's great. Great comments. Anything else? Okay, we did 4B, right? We did the vote on it?
No, we need a motion for.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I'll move that we approve resolution 2020-11 to adopt the city's final budget for this, for fiscal year 2020 through 2021.
Thank you. Culinary water service.